Hello, okay. Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM and I would like to welcome you to this meeting of the Granite Falls School Board. I would ask that you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to hand it over to our Superintendent Dana Geisler for our land acknowledgement?
We honor the first peoples of these lands by acknowledging that the area in which we gather is within the traditional territory of the Stillagomish tribe of Indians. The Stillagomish people have inhabited these lands and waters since time immemorial and their descendants have remained in this territory to this day. The Stillagomish people have continued to practice the traditional ways of their ancestors, of fishing, hunting, and gathering. The Stillagomish tribe has had these lands and cultural traditions passed on to them by their ancestors, who believe that everything has a spirit and that they are the caretakers of these lands and waters.
Thank you. Tonight in attendance, starting down at the far end of the table, we have Director Gockner, Director Dane, Director Ledoux, Director Carey, myself, Director Kincaid, and our Superintendent Dana Geisler. Before we get started on Success in Ed, we wanted to introduce the new principal from Monte Cristo Elementary, Maria Losi. She's in our honors seat standup. Welcome. Welcome. And then I'm just gonna hand the mic over to Ms. Geisler and she's going to kinda emcee the rest of this for a little while.
Alright, we will start tonight with our Success in Education. I see many bright shiny faces out there and this is such an amazing time to honor our students who are doing it right in the classroom. And it's about their hard work and their perseverance and who they are, their character, and all of those things. So, we will start with Emily Moore, who will present about Crossroads and Open Doors High School.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce two students from Crossroads High School. The first is...stand by, let me open the notebook. Jaden Sedino Mather, come on down. Jaden is a remarkable student, whose dedication, kindness, and passion shine in everything he does. Known for his artistic talent and creative spirit, Jaden brings a unique perspective to both the classroom and our special and amazing Crossroads community. His intelligence is matched by his humility and his willingness to help others, always uplifting those around him with a generous heart and a positive attitude. Jaden approaches every challenge with determination and grace, excelling academically while also pursuing his love for fashion. It has been an honor having him at Crossroads. For Mr. Davis, he says it's an honor having him in his check and connect and watching him succeed in so many just different aspects of life. Well deserved and proud of you, Jaden. Congratulations. We'll have you guys come up in a little bit for a great big picture. I wanted to see if Kaia Henson is here. Kaia, are you here? Kaia's here again! Come on down, Kaia. Kaia is an amazing student. She is the Class of 2025 valedictorian. And she has worked so hard. Yes, please do give her a round of applause. Kaia has a truly kind and compassionate soul. Her deep love for both people and animals shines through in everything that she does. Always willing to help and never one to judge, Kaia is a loyal friend, a thoughtful listener, and a constant source of support to those around her. Despite working full-time...I'm gonna say that again. Despite working full-time, Kaia has achieved the honor of valedictorian while maintaining an impressive 4.0 GPA. Did I say working full-time? Kaia is dependable, hardworking, and consistently brings warmth and positivity wherever she goes. Her quiet strength and unwavering dedication are nothing short of inspiring. So proud of you, Kaia. Congratulations.
So proud of you.
I would like to invite the Principal of Mountain Way Elementary, Rhodora De La Cruz.
Alright, can you hear me okay? Okay, so Mrs. Doughty, she's our kindergarten teacher. Are you out there? Okay, do you wanna come down here? And of course, Taylee, we need you to come down here. Or up here, I guess I should say. So this is Taylee Swanson and her kindergarten teacher, Ms. Doughty. Can you guys see Taylee? Taylee is an incredible student, both academically and socially. She has become a strong reader and you can often find her reading, one of our decodable readers, when she finishes assignments early. Taylee also has a passion for writing and trying to stump her classmates with trying to read words. Most of the time, this ends in constant giggles from all students. Taylee is one of those students a teacher is so grateful for. She's a helper even without being asked. A student spilled their snack, Tay is there. Someone needs help zipping up a coat or walk to the office, she's the first one to offer. Taylee is kind, compassionate, friendly, and just a little bit sassy. This is her teacher's speech. She is what I like to call my Velcro student. Wherever I am, you can find Tay. She has grown leaps and bounds this year and I'm so proud of her. She likes to tell me often that she isn't going to do, going to go to first grade, but I can't wait to see what she accomplishes in the future. Congratulations, Taylee.
Really am organized. Okay, so our second wonderful student is Tiffany Basile. Tiffany, are you here? Come on up, Tiffany. Alright Tiffany, Mr. Campbell and Mrs. Grabner both couldn't be here due to family reasons, but they are so excited for you and so proud of you. Do you wanna stand by Mrs. Geisler?
So Tiffany consistently demonstrates an exceptional commitment to learning. She remains fully engaged in learning from the moment she enters school in the morning until she walks out the doors in the afternoon. Tiffany is considerate and helpful to her classmates and teachers. When a neighbor needs support, academic or otherwise, Tiffany is always willing to lend a hand. When a teacher needs a reliable helper, she is eager to do her part. Tiffany's commitment to fully engage in lessons has resulted in significant learning growth. She has successfully gained academic skills that will help her moving forward. Tiffany takes pride in completing her work to a high standard. She completes tasks with patience and diligence, ensuring that her work meets her own high expectations. Tiffany's teachers are thrilled to work with such an outstanding student who understands the importance of learning and who works diligently to reach her learning goals. By the way, Tiffany's a first grader. Let's give Tiffany a hand. Okay. Our second grader, Ms. Steinbrick, are you here? Okay. So Mrs. Steinbrick is the teacher of Isabella Carmona Barrera. Isabella is a shining example of a positive role model in our second grade class. She consistently demonstrates kindness, compassion, and a willingness to help others, creating a welcoming and supportive classroom environment. Her thoughtful actions and respectful behavior inspire her peers to follow her lead. Isabella approaches every task with determination and a strong work ethic, always striving to do her very best. Whether working independently or collaborating with others, she makes responsible choices and can be counted on to do the right thing in every situation. Her positive attitude and integrity make her a valued and admired member of our class. Isabella's favorite subject is reading. Her favorite specialist is music. When she grows up, she would like to be a teacher. I am lucky to have Isabella as a student this year and I can't wait to see the amazing things she achieves in the future. Congratulations, Isabella. Alright. Monte Cristo, come on up. This is Principal Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have our very first recipient. Please come down, Ophelia Pevney. She's a third grade student. Her teacher is Ms. Schmidt. Ophelia truly embodies the qualities of an MCE minor. She consistently demonstrates dedication and commitment to her learning and has shown remarkable growth across all subject areas this year. Ophelia approaches every task with enthusiasm and always puts forth her best effort, giving 100% every time. As a student council member, she has showcased her leadership abilities and her passion for making a positive impact in our school community. Ophelia's love for learning shines through in every subject and she's always eager to share her ideas and offer support to her peers. Her teacher and I are incredibly fortunate to have her at our school and we are extremely proud of the progress she has made this school year. Ophelia's favorite part of the day is PE and when she gets to spend time with her teacher, Ms. Schmidt. Aww. She loves playing hockey and always enjoys lending a hand to her teacher. Ophelia's favorite book to read is Matilda, which her class is currently exploring through a book study. Ophelia loves spending time outdoors, especially riding horses. During the summer, she enjoys attending horse camp where she can do both of her favorite things. Ophelia has a passion for horseback riding and loves being outside. Congratulations to you, Ophelia. Our next recipient is Sofina Seong. Please come on up if you're here. Okay, she is not available tonight, so we'll move on to our next recipient, Luke Thurby. Please come on up if you're here. It seems like the sunshine is keeping people away tonight, and that's okay. Please give them both a round of applause. Please welcome our next speaker, Ms. Ward.
Okay, this evening we have three wonderful middle schoolers. The first one is gonna be Danielle Lind. Okay, so this sixth grade teaching team is excited to announce Danielle Lind as the Success in Education winner for fourth quarter. Danielle is a positive force in the classroom through her strong work ethic, kind attitude, and willingness to help others. She shows dedication to each of her classes and is a hardworking student who consistently puts in the effort needed to excel academically. Her determination to succeed drives her to stay focused on her goals. She's prepared for class, completes her assignments in a timely manner, and checks in when needed on clarification on new concepts. Perseveres when additional assistance with assignments is needed. She even makes sure to find out what assignment she's going to miss before planned absences. What a responsible kiddo. Likewise, Danielle shows respect to both her peers and teachers, creating an environment where everyone feels valued and included. Always polite, positive, kind, and respectful, she helps others understand concepts and skills and works kindly with them to complete their assignments. Danielle creates a better classroom for everyone and her positivity and leadership truly stand out, making her a true success in education. Congratulations Danielle and thank you for all that you do to make our school a better place. Congratulations. I would like to welcome up our seventh grade recipient, Maddox White. So congratulations to Maddox White for receiving the Success in Education Award for the fourth quarter for the seventh grade. Maddox is a truly special student. He is consistently kind, respectful, soft-spoken, and has a great sense of humor. He is also intelligent and always puts effort into his work. Maddox earns excellent grades and always checks in if he is absent to find out what he has missed or what he can do to get his grade up. His teachers admire Maddox's strong sense of right and wrong. He always chooses kindness. Maddox has lots of friends and is very involved in his education. Every day, he brightens our day by sincerely asking how his teachers are doing and wishing them a good day. The simple gesture says so much about your character. Just seeing Maddox bring a smile to his teachers' faces, he doesn't just make our day better, he makes Granite Falls Middle School a better place for all of us. We are excited to see all that Maddox will accomplish throughout his middle school years and beyond. Once again, congratulations to Maddox White for having a stellar seventh grade year and winning the Success in Education Award for the fourth quarter. Thank you, Maddox. Congratulations kiddo. You're welcome. And for our eighth grade, I would love to invite up Amaya Rhodes. And I have to tell you, she's pretty like amazing that the eighth grade team wrote a book, so bear with me. Okay, Amaya. It is our absolute pleasure to recognize Amaya Rhodes as a recipient of the Success in Education Award. Amaya is truly one of a kind, an outstanding student, teammate, and friend. From the moment she walks into a room, she brings a quiet strength that uplifts those around her. Whether it's offering a helping hand in the classroom or encouraging her teammates on the volleyball court, Amaya consistently shows up with kindness, grace, and determination. Amaya exemplifies our rock standards in everything she does. She is respectful, takes advantage of opportunities, is a part of our community, is full of knowledge, and is always ready to serve, not just in the classroom, but in every setting that she's a part of. She is everything you could ever hope for in a student. Thoughtful, dependable, hardworking, and always willing to do the right thing even when no one is watching. Though she tends to be on the quieter side, Amaya is always tuned in. She listens closely, learns deeply, and when she chooses to speak, her words carry weight. Her classmates respect her, not just for her intelligence, but her genuine thoughtfulness and care she shows in everything she does. Amaya is the kind of student who makes teaching a true joy. Hardworking, considerate, and always striving to do her best. A dedicated volleyball player, Amaya pours her heart into everything she takes on. Her perseverance and work ethic shines through both on and off the court. She is a kind person who leads by examples, not for recognition, but simply because she knows who she is. She values her education, respects her teachers and peers, and shows day after day what it's meant to be a well-rounded, compassionate young person. The eighth grade team is going to miss her more than words can say next year. Granite Falls High School is incredibly lucky to have her joining their community. We have no doubt she'll continue to thrive and inspire everyone around her. We are so proud to present this award to Amaya Rhodes. She truly represents the best Granite Falls Middle School has and we can't wait to see all the amazing things you do next year. Congratulations, Amaya. Thank you kiddo. And I would love to welcome up interim principal, Dave...I'm gonna try to say this...Bianchini.
So we have four outstanding recipients tonight and our first one is our freshman Winchester Ackerman. Come on up here Winchester. And as he's on his way up here, I break these up into three different parts. They write a little biography about themselves, what their goals are, hopes, dreams after high school. And then the teachers say a little bit and then I kinda dig a little bit deeper into just some, what their name means and for your parents to see if, if what your name means truly is his character. So Winchester, he is off to a great high school start. He's one of our 4.0 students, so he's number one in his class. He's a writer and a contributor for our Tiger Tribune, which is our school newspaper. In our last play, The Pink Panther, he had, for a freshman, he had two major roles. He played Coach Comet and Jarvis. And if anybody got to see the play, you got to see him do a wonderful lip sync of Madonna in full costume. It was great. He self-proclaimed himself as Ms. Sullivan's favorite freshman. He loves playing video games, loves to draw and write, both for the newspaper and just for fun. Loves reading, his favorite series is Terry Pratchett's Discworld. After high school, he wants to pursue a field that will allow him to write or make visuals for games or books. Winchester, here's what the teachers say. Winchester is a dedicated, is dedicated to his education, involved in the high school experience through his involvement in the theater department as well as the Tiger Tribune and is a role model for classroom engagement. He is very deserving of this award and I have no doubts he will go on to have a fantastic high school experience and be a leader of his class. Winchester is a joy to have in class. He asks great questions and is always willing to help his classmates. He demonstrates deep curiosity and I enjoy seeing the different strategies that he uses in order to solve math problems. Now his name, Winchester. It's an Old English name, meaning the dweller at the fort. Winchesters, they're charming and persuasive, they make the best out of any social situation. He has an aura of intuition and inspiration, a personality that goes along with others easily. Wanted stability in all life aspects, his greatest emphasis is on real connections and devotion and trust are his core principles. Pretty accurate, Mom? Or are ya? Pretty accurate. Let's hear it for Winchester Ackerman. Our next sophomore is Joy Neiman. Joy, come on up here. So I, when I was chatting with Joy yesterday, I just kinda reminded her, hey, today's a big day, or tomorrow's a big day, Wednesday's a big day, you got, you get to go to get Success in Ed. And she looked at me and she was like, "Uh, I was going to get a car that day, I can't make it." She got her car before and so we're okay. Two weeks ago, she came to me, two or three weeks ago, and she said, "How come I'm not winning any awards? I'm a 4.0 student, number one in the class, I do everything right, and I don't have anything really to do with these awards except get to announce them to you guys." The next day, the nominations for Success in Ed come out and she is one of the nominated ones. And so it's certainly when I got to tell her that she won the award, my secretary had to come in and like, "What's going?", because she was screaming so loud with excitement. So it's an award that she truly wanted and she truly deserves. Like I said, she's a 4.0 student for the sophomore class, she's number one for our sophomore class. She takes AP World History, pre-AP English, marine biology, and geometry. She plays libero on our volleyball team, she was inducted into the National Honor Society. She's applying to be one of our school board representatives and I think she'll be an outstanding candidate for that. She plays on the Summit Sports Northwest volleyball team, plans on getting more involved at her church. She volunteers at Crossroads, helping teachers sort, file, and organize. She's also done a lot of volunteering at our food bank this summer and in the past. She helps coach volleyball at the middle school and during open gym. So you can see she does a lot of things to keep herself involved. Here's what the teachers say. Joy is an outstanding student who consistently demonstrates a high level of dedication and excellence in our ELA pre-AP class. She is an active and thoughtful participant, contributing insightful ideas and helping to elevate the classroom discussions. Joy is always ready to learn and excited to help those around her. I can't always count on her to be engaged and prepared for class. Joy Neiman has been a great student to have in Spanish I and Spanish II. She strives to be successful in everything we are learning. She contributes her answers in class and always asks for clarification when she doesn't understand something. She is a great student. Her name, just like what you would think it would be, it means great pleasure or happiness. They have a deep sense of obligation to maintain high standards. Check. Warm charm, intuitive intellect, and a strong sense of responsibility. Check. Solves problems with ease and logic, caring and sympathetic toward their friends, always ready to offer a help and support when needed, a powerful force for good, bringing joy, love, beauty, and a sense of justice into the lives of others. From what I know of Joy, that's pretty accurate for, from my perspective. So let's give a big round of applause for Joy Neiman. Our next two candidates are two seniors who, really when I look at their four years here and knowing them in middle school, they've accomplished just about everything you could imagine through their high school careers. Fantastic athletes, fantastic students, they're involved in just about every aspect of the school. Without them next year, somebody's really gonna have to step up to fill their roles because both of them have had a huge impact on Granite Falls High School this year and the past four years that they've been here. And I'd like to bring up our first senior and she is our ASB president, Ava Arseniega. She's also the lead producer for our advanced multimedia class. Just about anything that comes out at Granite Falls High School in video, Ava has a Ava has had input in it, and it's always very stellar. She can even make me look good as an actor. She's a National Honor Society treasurer. She played varsity softball and soccer. She's a band lead and plays the snare drum. So you can see just kind of how busy this young lady is at Granite Falls High School. But there's more. She was a food drive coordinator. And here's, she is involved with Wangi. What is Wangi? Washington National Guard Youth Camp counselor, devoting over 500 hours throughout her high school career. After high school, she plans on attending Shoreland Community College and study film. She then plans to transfer to a four-year school out of state. She must not like the weather and want to get some better weather. She plans to study film also. She also plans to continue her work with Wangi as an adult. Ava is funny, bright, and ambitious. She always is a hoot in class and gave a stunning performance as Ghost in our class reading of Shakespeare's Hamlet. She will surely shine in her film career. What else can be said about Ava that hasn't already been said? She is a creative force for the AMM department, an outstanding student academically, and more importantly, a good person. Her humor, her strength of character, and her work ethic are just some of her finest qualities. Her name, Ava, means lively. All her activities prove that, for sure. You are not a builder but a planner. Bold, independent, inquisitive, and interested in research. Cooperation, partnership, and association are key attributes. Fostering harmony among those they encounter, they are peacemakers. They have a fear of being alone, but she has patience and natural ability to nurture others. And I think that's pretty spot on for Ava also. So let's give a big round of applause for Ava Arseniega. Congratulations. And again, our final senior, just about, has done everything you could hope for from a student at high school. And that's Isabel Frye. Come on down here, Bella. This young lady has really had quite a month. She was our first of two Herald Athletes of the Week. Won a scholarship for the Rotary last week, Success in Ed winner. All-conference softball. She's two weeks away from graduating. Tomorrow is our scholarship night where kids get other scholarships. She was invited to that. So what a way to end her senior year, going out in style like she has all four years here. She's a 3.9 GPA, top 10 in her class. She played volleyball for four years. She was a key player in their run to being one game away from making it to state. She's played softball for 15 years. Played for the Granite Falls High School softball team for the last five years. When they were eighth graders, it was right at the COVID time. Eighth graders got to play. She was a pitcher, and a group of them got to come up here and play. And one of my favorite memories, and I've shared this with her parents, she's an eighth grader, and she got to pitch a game, and it was against Sultan. She strikes out her first batter ever and just runs off the field and jumps right into her dad's arms. And I just like, man, she's gonna be a great one, and absolutely has turned out to be. First-team all-conference in softball for the five years that she participated. Two-year captain on softball. She's the vice president of Honor Society. She's a member of HOSA, our Health Occupation Students of America. She loves hanging out with friends, golfing during the summer, loves attending theater productions with her mom. They're an active member of the Father's House Church, attending every Sunday. She volunteered coaches at the Boys and Girls Club for volleyball for three years. After high school, she plans to attend college to pursue her dreams of becoming an occupational therapist. After she earns this degree, Superintendent Geislin and I have already decided that she's coming back here and be our occupational therapist, so there's a job waiting for her. She's quiet, thoughtful, a rock star of sixth-period English IV. Always ready with an insightful answer when you need one. She's a great person, a friend, her classmates. The work ethic is top-notch, and the follow-through of accountability is impressive. She not only performs at a very high level in softball, but in the classroom as well. She put in extra work with her busy schedule to do extra review for the AP psych test. I'm sure she did great on that. Isabel means pledge to God. Bella means beautiful. Deep desire for partnership and harmony, a sense of fulfillment, a dedication to service, and a deep connection to universal love. She aspiring to make the world a better place. Example of sympathy and compassion. Natural ability to acquire money and independence. Individuals who have experienced a wide range of personal and spiritual growth. And from what I know, again, about Bella, that's spot on. So congratulations, Bella. You are well-deserving of this award. Give it up for Bella. There we go, my dear. Congratulations.
All right, if we could have all of the Success in Ed award winners come to the front and the board as well, and we'll get some pictures. And another round of applause for all the amazing things our students are doing. Let's go board in the back and youngsters in the front. And parents, feel free to do whatever you need to do to get pictures. You're gonna have to squish in a little bit, guys. All right, we'll move on to the next part of our program. And we have four awards for our Bridge Builder Awards. And our Bridge Builder Awards recognize the amazing relationships that so many adults in our system make with our students. And we know that it starts with adult-student relationships. The research is very, very clear on that. So we are so looking forward to honoring four people tonight. Also, a special thank you to Pilchuck Espresso. They have donated generously, without us even asking, a nice gift card to each of the winners. And so not only do they get an amazing wood award, but they also get a gift certificate from Pilchuck Espresso. So thank you, Pilchuck. So we will start off. Tonight, we have the joy of honoring someone who exemplifies the heart of our work with students, Ms. Larissa McGalvey. And Paris, if you could get the wood awards, I think they're over on the...
Larissa is a student supervisor at Monte Cristo Elementary and one of this year's Bridge Builder Award recipients. Larissa's presence on campus is one of connection, consistency, and care. She meets every student with warmth and intention, creating a space, especially during recess, that feels safe, inclusive, and full of joy. Whether she's organizing a group sport, inviting a student into a new game, or simply offering a smile and encouragement, she ensures every child feels seen, included, and valued. And she doesn't stop there. On Fun Fridays, she rolls out a speaker. I have seen this. I sort of want to be in fourth grade when this is happening. She rolls out a speaker and plays music, transforming the playground into a celebration. It's just one example of how she adds creativity and heart to everything she does. Her efforts help shape a positive school climate that lifts up students and staff alike. When Larissa found out she was receiving this award, her response was a perfect reflection of who she is. She shared how humbled she felt, how much she loves every student, and how grateful she is to be part of the Monte Cristo team. In her words, "She's just one part of a group of caring people who show up for kids each day." And she made sure to thank her fellow student supervisors for the collective work that they do. That humility, that heart, that deep understanding that our work is stronger when it's done together, that's what makes Ms. Larissa a bridge builder. She reminds us that having the right people in front of kids matters. And she's exactly the kind of person who makes school a place where students feel like they belong. It truly does take a village to help young people grow into who they are meant to be. Ms. Larissa is not only part of that village, she's one of its brightest lights. Congratulations, Ms. Larissa. We thank you, we honor you, and we celebrate the difference you make in the lives of students every single day.
All right, for our second Bridge Builder Award, we honor someone whose classroom radiates joy, compassion, and deep connection, Emily Williams.
Emily Williams, a beloved teacher at Mountain Way Elementary. Emily starts each day the same way, with a big smile and a warm good morning for every student who walks through her door. It may seem simple, but that daily welcome sets the tone for everything that follows. Her students feel safe, loved, and excited to learn because they know their teacher is truly there for them. Emily has a gift for seeing each student's unique strengths, especially those with more complex needs. She approaches every child with patience, kindness, and an unshakable belief in their potential. She's not just teaching, she's building trust, cultivating confidence, and creating a space where every child feels like they belong. The proof of her impact can be seen in the long line of families who request her year after year. Because once a child has had the Mrs. Williams experience, they want that same joy and care for every sibling who follows. And it's not just winning the walls of Mountain Way. Mention Emily's name in the community and hear stories of her extraordinary teaching, her warmth, and the lives she's touched over the years. Emily, you are a teacher every child deserves to have and every parent hopes for. You are a true bridge builder, connecting hearts, growing minds, and inspiring everyone around you. We are so lucky to have you in Granite Falls. Please join me in celebrating Emily Williams, an educator who continues to make a lasting difference, one student at a time.
And we will move on to our third Bridge Builder Award recipient, someone who has a quiet strength behind so much of what makes Mountain Way Elementary feel like home. While Sue's Parish couldn't be in person here this evening, she did, in true Sue's fashion, send a heartfelt message of gratitude. She wanted me to share how truly honored she is to receive this award and how sad she is to miss being with all of you tonight. But I can promise you this, her presence is very much felt. Sue's is one of our incredible secretaries at Mountain Way Elementary, but if you've spent even a single day in Granite Falls, you know this title barely scratches the surface. Sue's is, without a doubt, the heart and soul of Mountain Way. Her colleagues said it best, Sue's is the heart of Mountain Way. She has done incredible work this year in helping Mountain Way run each day, whether it's greeting families, tying little shoes, or comforting a nervous student or a worried parent. And perhaps most powerfully, Sue's has been in Granite Falls for a generation. We now have families enrolling their kindergartners who once sat in her office themselves. Her deep connection to this community is unmatched. She doesn't just go above and beyond, she lives there. Let me tell you a story, one that says everything about who Sue's is. Not too long ago, I was walking down the hallway at Mountain Way, and a young student fell into step behind me. She looked up and she said, "Where you headed?" I said, "I'm going to the office to see Ms. Sue's." Her face lit up, and she said, "Me too. Ms. Sue's is my grandma." I smiled and said, "You're so lucky." And without a hesitation, she looked at me and said, "I know." That's Sue's. Whether you're a grandchild, a student, a staff member, a parent, or even a delivery driver, when you walk through the doors of Mountain Way, Sue's welcomes you in and makes you feel like you're hers. On behalf of all of us in Granite Falls School District, we say, "Congratulations, Sue's. Thank you for being the bridge that connects hearts, homes, generations, and we are so proud of you." And our last Bridge Builder that we're honoring tonight is Ms. Eileen Brower. All right, it's my honor to present our fourth Bridge Builder Award to someone whose work has truly opened doors for students, Special Education Teacher, Eileen Brower of Granite Falls High School. Eileen has created a powerful and engaging transition program for our 18- to 22-year-old students. Through her leadership, this program is rich in experiences, hands-on in learning, and real-world skill-building. Her students are gaining essential tools that will serve them in their post-secondary journeys, whether in employment, further education, or independent living. Eileen builds bridges not just into adulthood, but into possibility. She makes sure her students feel seen, heard, supported, and successful every step of the way. One nominator shared, "She actively engages with students to make them feel seen, heard, and supported and successful. She offers emotional support and encouragement while helping a vulnerable student population achieve their potential." A future Granite Falls High School Transition Program parent wrote, "She has already made my son feel a part of the program, even though he doesn't start until this fall, by inviting him to evening events and checking in with him when he attends." That's who Eileen is. She doesn't wait for the official start date. She starts building in belonging early. She creates opportunities for students to try new things, connect with peers, and feel confident in stepping into the next phase of their lives. Eileen, your deep care, strong leadership, and relentless commitment to your students' futures define what it means to be a bridge builder. You're not just guiding students across the bridge, you're helping them build it, step by step, with the tools they need to thrive. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do for our students and families. Granite Falls is better because of you. We wanted to announce also, we're gonna transition here. Actually, sorry, could we have the Bridge Builders come up? Let's get a picture really quick. In front of the Bridge Builder sign and honor them once more. And you get to come up and actually stand behind this amazing sign that is on the stage. And we might move that TV just a smidge to be able to get that picture. You can come up on the stage behind there. Jen, could you help move that just a little bit towards the door? All right, and one more round of applause for our Bridge Builders. And one more quick thing that we wanted to update everyone on, and then I know I'll turn it back over to Director Kincaid. We are starting a golf program for the fall at Granite Falls High School. We offer two more girls' sports than we do guys' sports, and we're trying to balance that out a little bit. And tonight, we'll be presenting to the board a check for $5,000 from Mark Piggott, who donated to the program to help it get off and running. So thank you to Mr. Piggott for that. And thank you to the parents and Mr. Bianchini, who have really lifted this. We are really excited to offer this opportunity as a fall sport. And we have a golf course that we've secured a partnership, and a pro that's gonna help us as well. So thank you to everyone who's stepping in on that. And then spread the word, if you would like to go out for golf, see Mr. Bianchini, he can definitely give you the details.
So I'm really excited to get the opportunity to honor some students today who have accomplished something pretty extravagant. This evening, we proudly recognize a group of exceptional students who have demonstrated not only academic achievement, but also linguistic and cultural fluency. Established in 2014, the Washington State Seal of Bilinguism honors public high school graduates who have achieved an intermediate/mid proficiency in both English and at least one additional language, including American Sign Language and tribal languages. This distinction celebrates the power of communication across cultures and affirms the value of multilingualism in our global society. It also reflects our belief that all graduation pathways should honor diverse talents and skills, including the ability to think, speak, and understand in more than one language. These students have met rigorous standards to earn this recognition, and in doing so, they enrich our schools, our community, and our world. So I'd like for you to please join us in congratulating- So I'd like for you to please join us in congratulating them on this outstanding accomplishment. The first student that we recognized tonight, some of them might not be here, and also I apologize if I butcher your names, I try hard. All right, first one is Genesis Flores. Is she here? No? Okay. Alexander Vargas Reed. Congratulations. Jeremiah or Jerry Umanzar Ugaldi. Congratulations. Manuel Carmona. Eric Diaz. Oh, oh yes, there's a track meet, so some are not here. Nadia Dezur. Michelle Avalos Renega. And Crystal Lopez. Congratulations. Oh, we're going to take a quick picture. While we're doing that, we're going to go into a five-minute little recess. So if you guys want to stick around, you can. If not, you can take off and enjoy the rest of the sunshine we have for today. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Also was participated, came by for the dedication of the new... Some amendments that were recently passed, there were seven that were recently passed. Some that, we already mentioned, the sanctioning of girls' flag football in high school, so that went through. Another one that I found interesting, so middle school players can now participate in three contests per week. So if we want to get them out there working more, we can do that. And then also, for soccer, both middle and high school, if you are up by eight or more goals, in high school after 60 minutes, or in middle school after 45 minutes, the contest is off. So score early, score often, go fast. Those are just a few of the things from WIA. In terms of comments, right, it's going towards the end of school here. Everybody's winding down, but there's also a lot of exciting things going on. I know my daughter is always the most excited. She has an ice cream event on Friday in class. And then I can't go a day without hearing about Field Day, which is fantastic. Field Day is always so exciting. Obviously, at the secondary schools, we have graduation. It is, that is their day, a day for, you know, to celebrate their achievements, everything that they've gone through. They've been in this, they've been in a school system for 13 years, if not this one, for 13 years. And so really want to applaud those accomplishments there. And, you know, success in Ed, too, you know, just... Each one of these nights, it's just a great reminder of the amazing students that we have. I mean, you know, most of the students that came up, too, you know, you could say, you know, Ava was also, she was sitting next to the board a few years ago as well, provided great guidance. You know, we have a ton of amazing students in the bilingual, or multilingual even. You know, having that capability. I could not, I took three years of Spanish in high school, and God bless them. They are fantastic to be able to learn that. And so I just really want to, you know, applaud all of our students and everything. We're getting here towards the end of the year, graduation, field days, all sorts of fun, and celebration coming through, so.
Yeah, I'll start with a legislative update. So I serve the board as the legislative rep. In that volunteer role, kind of my job is to advocate for Granite Falls, Granite Falls students at the state level, and to also communicate back to the board what's happening in Olympia as it relates to education. And I haven't given my end-of-session report, so I thought I'd do it today. So a couple of, well, I will say that the results for public education with the close of the session is kind of a mixed bag. Some good, some bad. Just to start with the good, and I guess I should preface this with saying that, you know, nothing that I say after this is saying that I am not highly appreciative of Olympia and their support of public education. It was a very, very tough year fiscally, and, you know, to get any increases in K-12 funding with a tough-tough budget is outstanding. And so I'm certainly not sour grapes about that, but, you know, I certainly have other opinions about some of the other changes. So just going over the numbers real quick. We, K-12 got an increase of about $2.46 billion, which is a fantastic sounding number, and again, it is. But most of that, about $2.1 billion was already allocated. It was money that was already committed and spent and stuff like that. So, you know, not a huge gain as it relates to budget, but better for sure. About $321 million of that was for special education, certainly money well needed. $78.9 million for MSOC. MSOC stands for Material Supplies and Operating Costs. And about $113 million for LEA, Local Effort Assistance for Smaller Districts. All great stuff, fantastic, but I guess a couple of just asterisks that, you know, certainly what the board and anyone watching to know. There was a lot of discussion before the beginning of the session relative to the amount of the state's budget that was allocated for K-12. At one point, it was in the 50s, 50% of the budget, which, you know, the McCleary and all the things have kind of led us up to this. You know, if it's the paramount duty of the state, right, you would assume that that would be certainly a paramount part of the budget. And so there was a real push and what felt like a lot of movement in Olympia initially to right the ship in that, to get, you know, K-12 funding back closer to 50%. The unfortunate news is we actually dropped, went from 43.4 to about 43.2, so movement in the opposite direction. Not great. There was also some cuts that really sting. The transition to K-12 or kindergarten funding was capped, saving the state about $74.6 billion, or $1 million, sorry. They also took about $8.4 million from ESDs, Reduction to Career Connected Learning, as well as about the $138 million in OSPI grant eliminations, which is dual-language support, homeless student support, which we certainly have a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of homeless students in our district, which is heartbreaking. So, again, just kind of going through the reality of the numbers for us. You know, there was, there's about a billion-dollar shortfall statewide in special education funding. And we got about, hold on, I always like to be specific in the numbers that I give. I believe we got about $274 million, so about a quarter of what was being asked and what is unfortunately lacking. And then there's over a billion dollars of loss in MSOC funding. And so MSOC's is basic operational needs, food, electricity, insurance. I'm sure as everyone knows here, just like my own personal insurance, insurance costs lately have just skyrocketed. Something we don't have any control over, we just have to pay the bill. There's over a billion-dollar statewide shortfall in that, and we got about $90 million. Also, there was a big push to redo, update the student transportation formula that doesn't really meet the needs of a lot of communities. I would say us being one of them, other communities like Sulten, smaller, have a small districts like us. Legislature hasn't even touched that. And they increased the gas tax, which actually unfortunately goes the opposite direction. So, like I said, kind of a mixed bag. I don't, I hate ending on a negative note. Like I said, we got with K-12, there was a greater amount of money provided there. And thank you specifically to our legislators here in the 39th, Carolyn Castling, Sam Lowe, and Scott Wagner. They are, they've been fantastic. Anytime I've called them, they've always picked up the phone. They're going to be here tomorrow to tour our school. They are, they are very supportive of some of the things that we're trying to do. So I certainly don't want to cast any dispersions about them. You know, we got, I think, the best that we could kind of get this session. So, other than I bet, I'll just take some questions if the board or anyone has any.
No.
That's all I've got.
Okay, excellent. As far as my comments go tonight, I don't have anything prepared, but based on what's next in our agenda here, I thought that I should say a little something. So I have decided not to seek another term on the school board. So this will be kind of my last run. January will be the end of me. But I have to say that my reasoning for this, you could blame Granite Falls, because it is not... Oh, I don't want to cry, I love my crying. I wouldn't be here in, here or in my job without the influence of Granite Falls School District. I started volunteering in classrooms when my daughter was in kindergarten, she's now in sixth grade. I found my love of education volunteering in those classrooms. And then I became a substitute teacher and I got to actually teach in those classrooms. And it was because of that I went back to school, because I joined the school board as a stay-at-home mom. I went back to school and I got my master's degree in elementary education. And now I am a first-grade teacher and I'm going into my third year of teaching this next year in second grade in a different school. But I wouldn't be there, I wouldn't be here without Granite Falls School District, because that's where all of this passion started. So I just want to thank the whole school district for just being a huge inspiration to me. So I just wanted to address that and say, no, I will not be running. And I have loved every moment. I've made lifelong friends, family. And I'm going to miss it, but I have until January, so I'm not going to cry yet. I have until January, so that's all I wanted to say about that. So, moving on to item number 4A is our reorganization, where we discuss electing presidents, vice presidents, etc.
So Mike.
Please.
Okay, so a couple of things on this. We've, obviously, we have to elect new members of the board, and it has to be a roll-call vote. So we'll have to go, you know, I, 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 or whatever. And then, obviously, whoever is elected for chair will still take the rest of the meeting. So we'll have like an official pass of the gavel and stuff like that. So during this, anybody can make any nominations or anything along those lines. And then we'll, I believe that you have to ask if there is anyone else. You have to ask, I think, is it three times, like before we go to voters, something like that, so that's it. So, if you want, wherever you want to start, Chair. Where's Chair?
Yeah, yeah, we'll start with that.
I would like to nominate Peter Ledoux for Board President. Second. And then you, are there any other names?
Are there any other names? Any other names? Any other names? Okay, so...
Now we go down and vote on it.
Okay, so Director Carey.
Hi.
Director Ledoux.
Hi.
Director Dane.
Hi.
Director Goffner.
Hi.
Uh, myself. Hi. Congratulations.
So now you call for votes.
That was a quick turn.
I know.
Okay.
The passing of the gavel.
Okay, so now we'll look for any nominations for the Vice President of the board.
I would like to nominate Bill Dane for Vice President.
I second.
And there's been a second. Are there any other names? Any other names? Any other names? Okay, so we'll start down with Director Kincaid.
I.
Director Carey?
Hi.
Myself, I.
Hi.
Director Dane?
Hi.
Yeah. Okay, and then we also, there's quite actually a long list, not just listed here, right? There's Pro Tem.
Yes, yes, so...
Is that not in here?
It's on the computer.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's Chair Pro Tem. I do believe Director Ledoux, Chair Ledoux now. That it is Pro Tem next, but I'll tell you for sure.
Yeah.
Oops, it's this.
Okay.
Yes, President Pro Tem.
Okay, so I'd like to call for nominations for President Pro Tem, which is effectively third acting as presidents when President and Vice President are not available. Nominations. I would like to nominate, can I nominate as President? Okay, I'd like to nominate Director Goffner as Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay, any other names? Any other names? Any other names? Okay, we'll start down. Director Kincaid?
Hi.
Director Carey?
Hi.
Director Dane?
Hi.
Director Goffner?
Hi.
Myself, I.
So the good news is for the rest of whom, we don't need roll call.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, so now the next is a call for nominations for the legislative rep.
I'm happy to continue servicing this until January, if it's certain, if the board has, is okay with that.
Yeah.
We'll appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would you like to give an official nomination?
I'd like to nominate Carl Carey to stay as our legislative representative.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Carl is my rep. Okay, uh, nominations for W I A A representative. Again, I'm happy to continue that unless somebody else would like to do that.
Uh, I nominate Peter Ledoux to remain as a W I A A representative.
Okay, I will second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Miss? Okay, and then, uh, community liaison, so any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Carly Kincaid for community liaison, she's awesome at this.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and then this one is a little bit more kind of voluntary, right? Do we need to vote for schools or no? So we just, we just kind of select, so there, there's any preferences um, on which schools that you would, and again, um, the schools that you're assigned to, right? You're kind of the point person for the school. We have, it works out perfectly because we have five board members of five buildings. So Mountain Way, Monte Cristo, middle school, high school and Crossroads.
And usually we give preference to where your kids are, if your kids are in a certain building. Yeah, probably easier for you to do that, so.
Yeah, yeah. So then I would take preference towards Monte Cristo.
You want Mountain Way?
Mountain Way.
I'm happy with any of the three, so if any of you guys have a stronger feeling.
Do Crossroads.
Crossroads, okay.
What do you want?
I'll do middle school.
All right, I'll do high school.
Okay, so that completes four A, so now we move to five A, items from the floor. Do we have anything?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, so then that moves us on to new business. Uh, six A, high school siding repairs and painting prepared by Marshall Karems.
Our clicker. Um, so I, in your packet, there was a presentation that had a lot of pictures in it and some descriptions. So I hope you guys got a chance to look at it. I'm gonna try and breeze through this a little bit, but, um, we're asking to do a larger than normal project this summer at the high school. The siding of the high school, um, has fallen into disrepair, we paid off the high school back in December. So that bond is completely paid for, it's fallen off our books, off the taxpayers' bill. But there is some maintenance that needs to be done on the high school. When the siding was installed originally, and I'm, I'm not a siding expert, I'm relaying the messages I got from the people that came and gave us quotes on repairs. There's supposed to be a gap between where the cement cinder block, um, brick is and the start of the siding, there's supposed to be a gap of about an inch with the metal flashing. And the reason for the gap is that there's a little, um, lip on the cinder block that collects water and the water seeps upward into the siding. And the siding essentially becomes like wrapping paper or the skin of an onion. It is just so brittle and wrinkled and it becomes far too tempting, the wind will blow it off, but kids also like to peel it off, it's, it's just tempting. So, um, in part of the quote is that there's replacing the first two, the bottom two rows of the siding and the entire high school. Because they need to pick, they need to pull off two rows to get to the bottom row, just because the way it overlaps. And they'll put in a gap, they'll put in the metal flashing and they'll, they'll make the siding transition into the cinder block correctly. Also while doing that, they're, they're gonna, a lot of the, because of settling of the building, because of water in the ground, a lot of the seams have split all over the building in the siding. So they're gonna recock the siding, they're gonna pressure wash and then, um, on the previous slide, it's, you can't really see it from far away, but close up, all of the pillars are made of, um, a metal substance and they're all starting to rust. And from far away, it just blends into the background, but when you get within, you know, ten feet of it, you can see the, the rust on every single metal pillar. So it's remove that and repaint it, repaint the building in its original colors and, um, make the necessary repairs to the siding. It's a big job, it's gonna take a month to six weeks for a company to do it. We're soliciting three bids. I included one bid in the packet, the first bid we got, just kind of for scope of the work. And the first bid was about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We received our second bid today and it was about three hundred thousand dollars. And we expect to get our third bid next week. This is not being paid out of general fund. We have some money in capital projects that we've kind of set aside to tackle a large project. And so this would come out of capital projects and so it doesn't affect the day-to-day operations of the schools. Anything like that, it's just capital projects money that's designed to make necessary repairs to our buildings. We recognize that the other building that's in need of repairs soon is probably the middle school. So we'd also then like to spend next school year figuring out the direction we want to go to repair the middle school because it's the stucco falling off and painting and all those things and the stuck, is, is re-stuccoing it the right idea? Is siding a better idea? What, what's the proper way to repair it to make it last a long time? And what our direction is as a district as far as growth? Because we're also working on growth projections right now and the growth projections are looking pretty impressive, which that'll be a soon to come study session probably. Anyways, um, we need to get started on this before the next board meeting happens because they, they really need to get started probably as soon as school is out. Because it is gonna be six weeks to even maybe two months. Um, so what we're kind of asking is the scope of the work is gonna be somewhere between probably two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's gonna be completely, um, renewing the exterior of the high school. And rather than come back at the end of the month and say, here's the bid we'd like to choose and get approval, we'd like to just kind of get a thumbs up that, okay, if it's within that scope that you're describing and the work is gonna be done similar to the bid that we've, we've attached, let's do it, that's the direction we need to go, we need to maintain our high school. It's kind of the, it's, it's the jewel of our school district. And, um, it's paid for now and let's celebrate that with renewing the exterior.
Any, so if we, we made a motion tonight to approve, um, a renovation project of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, would that cover what we need?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we have four hundred thousand dollars in our capital projects fund right now and it'll to last the next two and a half months, which is, is plenty to do this project and still do everything else we need to do.
Where, where is that? Because the, the ending balance is like a hundred and thirty-four.
We just got our, um, our April levy money for capital projects. So that April levy money is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that is the last, last, um, budget status report is March, I think. So when April's budget status report comes out on my next board report, it'll show that we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that.
Because we had a, but our budget was a hundred and eighty-three thousand in, in April. So is that?
Um, we did, we did a budget extension, we had, we got, we had a little more timber money than we were expecting. So we have a little more money in our capital projects fund to spend than we were expecting. We did, we did a budget extension last board meeting to allow us to spend more money in capital projects because we have more money.
So, so with that, um, extension, the updated balance in April is gonna be four hundred and something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it is, is important to note too, and again, not to repeat, but for anybody new listening or anything, the capital projects does not, and Marshall, you alluded to it, does not impact people, processes, operation.
And we can't, we can't pay for salaries, we can't pay for benefits, we can't pay for school supplies.
It's literally used for stuff like this or only be used for stuff like this. Um, and I will say also, I mean, it's a lot of money, but I think the last architectural firm that we had in here just replay, recommended replacing all of the siding and it was like one point six million dollars. So I mean, so long is, do we have an idea of this investment? What's the longevity and scope of it?
Um, I don't, I don't have that answer, but it really is the, if you go above about two layers of the siding, the siding's in very good condition. So it's really the bottom two layers because the water is seeping up from the bottom.
Re-sealing and everything.
Yeah.
Mask and the.
Yeah, yeah.
The, uh, are any of the bids, um, Granite Falls companies, out of curiosity?
I don't believe so, I think the scope of the work, I think that there are so much county companies, but I don't know that they're in, I don't know that their home office is in the city of Granite Falls.
And I don't know if there's any, we locally have any people that engage in this work, but you know, just trying to keep the money local if we can. So, so essentially, uh, and I'm, I'm not saying this to Kurt, but essentially you want us to vote to approve not a bid, but a number.
A blank check.
Not, not blank, not blank.
I feel.
Not, not to exceed.
I know it feels super easy. Is, are you, I mean, we have a bid in front of us, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, right? What, um, what makes you think we need the two hundred and fifty?
Um, there, there, there could be us, I, I think it's gonna be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but we, there could be a, um, uh, the, well, the second company came in at three hundred thousand dollars and it wasn't any better. Their scope was not anything higher, it was just their costs were higher. This third company, they, they.
We don't pay tax, right?
We pay tax on some things.
Okay. Sorry, I see subtax.
Yeah, we pay, we pay tax on service, on, um, supplies and services. We don't pay tax on things we resell, but we don't resell that stuff.
Got it, sorry to interrupt you.
We contribute to the poppers of the state of Washington.
Get it from taxes and give it back. And, so it's very, um, just through my experience, the, the fire services, that when we're looking at something like this and we're out to bid, um, it is general practice to, um, approve, uh, uh, a motion to limit the amount spent on a project. But waiting, and I'm, I'm getting Marshall right now, is, um, we don't have, we won't have the luxury of waiting till the next meeting to consider this, so by limiting their ability, the other thing is that this bid may have come in low, at, at two hundred and twenty thousand, the next bid may come in just under the two fifty, but there might be exceptions that a contractor, the, our, our group is gonna have to look at the contractors, see what they offer, see, um, do, do essentially a resume search to make sure that they're appropriate. And in this, with the state, they can, they can kick out the lowest bid if it doesn't fit what we need and they're, and, and they don't have a resume that we trust to do this project correctly.
Right, thanks for that clarification, Director Dane.
Based on that, I feel better about it.
Yeah, is there, um, assuming if we approve X dollar amount, that cannot be exceeded without board of direct?
Correct.
Okay. Because, and then, I mean, Director Dane, you bring up a good point, I know how construction works. How they can come in at two twenty-two and it ends up. Yes, there's always being two thirty-five, because my mind initially goes to, can the board approve two fifteen and we go back and say we only have board approval for two fifteen. You know, just because I'm, I'm trying to think like, in the grand scheme of this, you know, even, even seven thousand dollars, right? I, like, we have, we have things that add up over time. But yeah, I think it would depend on the language within the actual bid that comes in in terms of expected versus actual versus like a limit on overages or something along those lines. So if, I don't know, I mean, I'll, I'll kind of defer to the board here, if we think that two fifty is the number, then we can do that, but if, if two, if it's two fifty because it's a nice round number and it sounds good, then let's, let's try to be more conservative.
To Director Dane's point, just because we approved two fifty doesn't necessarily mean we're paying two fifty.
Right, right, just giving you up, up, updated. What we're doing is putting a limit on our administration to say, you can't stand over this.
Yeah.
However the bits come in, right? They'll have to come back.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that our, our administrative group will do what they can to minimize the costs of whatever we're gonna, I think they do a fantastic job of that now. This is an, this is an, all of our buildings, I should say, are expensive buildings to maintain. If we don't maintain it, the next bid will be, like you said, replace all of it by a million and a half dollars.
Yeah.
This, this isn't just putting a patch on it, this is doing a repair and a repaint that will, could last ten, fifteen, twenty years, especially if it's done correctly. But it sounds like they didn't do it correctly initially and that's why in ten years we're paying for, uh, this repair.
It makes me feel better that you said we're not going out of the norms by doing, so, yeah. I think, if I could add one more thing, I think I'm, I'm confident in the, in the quality of the bid that the, the little bit is. If we were going to exceed that, it would be something that we discovered during the process, that would be a change order. And we would then have plenty of time to come back to the board on the twenty-eighth and say, hey, as we were getting into this project, we discovered something that we weren't aware of and we need to do a change order.
Yeah, the south side wall needs to be rebuilt or something like that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, this renovation project for the high school at a maximum, uh, cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now to six, B E L A six through twelve curriculum adoption, presented by Emily Moore.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for being here on this long, hot evening, of course, it's the hottest day of the year so far. I am joined by, uh, some amazing colleagues who have been alongside each other in this curriculum pilot, um, including John Thompson, Katie Leppen and Sherry Green, T J Countryman, and I know Matt Kimball with a hundred and one fever is watching from home.
Oh.
In front of you, you have a packet and let me just keep going here, and that packet starts with something called Form C one, which is part of Board Policy twenty twenty. And, uh, this is, uh, the package that we are going to be visiting at, um, for this evening's discussion about the ELA adoption. So, um, I will direct your attention to, uh, the slide deck. And, um, one of the things that I really want to ground us all in and what we have been speaking about as an ELA team, first to say real thanks to the team for coming together. Six, twelve teachers really engaging in deep conversation about not just the curriculum, but, uh, engaging instruction. And we hold a belief that curriculum alignment partnered with robust professional learning and high quality and consistent instructional practice will improve student achievement, increase effectiveness of curriculum conversations and teacher practice and ensure educational equity for students across their grade level experiences. I cannot overstate the need for guaranteed and viable curriculum for students in our ELA programs from sixth through twelfth grade and in special education. I look to John Thompson, who is a longtime Granite Falls School District teacher, who states that we have not had a guaranteed and viable curriculum across six, twelve in more than thirty-one years. I wanted to highlight a little bit of where we are with the process to also highlight for you that, the process of ELA adoption started well before my time. And, um, so here in front of you, the timeline, where we are today is end of May. I'm excited to let you know that due to the hard work of people that came before me, we have guaranteed and viable curriculum at K five, C K L A Amplify. And now it is our turn to create that standardized guaranteed experience for our sixth through twelfth graders. So, um, we've done a little bit of resetting, we paused at the end of the summer because I was looking at the ticket price. And, um, it seemed like a lot and there was not a lot of. it seemed like a lot, and there was not a lot of definition, and there was this promise, if you'll remember, that we were supposed to buy, we had to buy if we were going to pilot last fall, and I didn't want to do that. And I wanted to be really careful about our fiscal stewardship. I brought our team back together in the fall. And we determined to move forward with a true pilot. We received materials in January, they jumped right in, they got a couple of professional learning experiences, and they just jumped in. And I'm so proud of their work because their work is heading us towards an experience where all Granite Falls School District students will receive the Arc of the English Language Experience. So just to highlight a little bit of the process that we followed in stage one, we did a lot of communication and built our committees. Um, there was a choice that we could have made to have one or two teachers at the middle school pilot and one or two teachers at the high school. I didn't want to do that. I wanted everybody who was going to wear this, as my dear old dad would say, I don't have to wear it, but we got it, I'll try it on. And I think that it was an important decision that we made. And so all of our six, twelve teachers were in the room. We selected our committee. We took a look at board policy. We determined a decision-making protocol. We defined our consensus. We'd already had our selection of pilot materials, though middle school was headed in a different direction. And then we talked about the true value of having one curriculum, one set of academic vocabulary and internal curricular vocabulary. And we decided on H M H Into Literature. We've been working to assess our digital learning tools. We held a caregiver review night. We, all along the way, have been gathering input from our students. And we conducted a robust staff review process that included a very long, if I might say, team, uh, rubric, uh, and scoring process. We reviewed our input. We voted using our decision-making criteria. And we made a recommendation to CIA, which is our new instructional materials committee. And so on the next page, you'll see where we are in the process today. On May twentieth, we had, um, a caregiver review, uh, meeting where we had materials out. I'm, um, sorry to say that we did not, while we had four staff members attend, we did not have any parents come. And I'm, I'm going to say, coming from a large district, where your adopted K twelve curriculum, it's just not really a thing. The other events at school districts are like way more fun, coming and looking at English books. Our students, um, use this curriculum from January through today, and will continue to use it for the rest of the year. They report that the material is relevant to them, they like the stories, they like, um, the content of the readings that they're given. Uh, they have topics such as selfies and horror, and that interests them as readers. The staff review rubric, I've encapsulated this down to this table. Total positive ratings. It is predominantly positive. Couple of places where we still need to learn a little bit more are around constructing knowledge and the assessments piece. But I want to disclose to you that there are some challenges with the digital platform right now. It is inexplicable to us because it's the twenty-first century. And we should be able to click this box over here and have it linked to Canvas over here. We are still working that through amidst, and I'm looking at my team amidst the digital platform issues. Um, they truly believe that this is, um, the right curriculum at the right time and the right place for our students. Upon their vote, we made a recommendation to CIA on Thursday, May twenty-second, and we recommend adoption to the Board of Directors. So just a quick list of what we see here for a five-year cost proposal. So when quotes for curriculum come in, they come in at one year, usually five-year, eight-year, and they're trying to give us a really, really good deal for, uh, for our dollar. Um, we have looked at the five-year cost proposal, which for every year per student would be sixty-one dollars per student for five years. On the left side of the table, you'll see Into Literature. That is the general education curriculum for six, twelve. There is a digital platform. There are consumables, we would receive those consumables every year for five years. There are novel points. There are teachers additions that were part of the pilot that we already own. And then some robust professional development services. Roughly thirty-five thousand dollars and change a year for five years for the Into Literature Gen Ed curriculum. For Read One Eighty, that is the curriculum that is for special education. And I also cannot overstate the need to have curriculum specific to special education. It is sometimes the ugly stepsister in the conversation around curriculum. And with an eligibility rate, the likes of twenty-two-ish percent, Rachel, twenty-two-ish percent. What that means is that curriculum is written for students to access it when they're reading at grade level. So we have roughly twenty-two percent of our students across the system that are not reading at grade level. And so this gives us an opportunity to have guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students on special education. And if you hear my excitement, imagine being a twelfth grader reading at a fourth grade level. And the reading choices that you're given year in and year out are limited to subjects like PJ masks and playing soccer on Fridays and Fireman Sam. This option, Read One Eighty, gives every teacher a classroom independent reading set that is at students' developmentally, cognitively, like their issues. The things that they want to read about, the things that they want to talk about. But it is at their reading level. Um, again, we already own the teachers additions, you can see the PD services that are offered. The other piece that we're looking at is E three D or English three D. This is same company, um, but materials for our multilingual learners. There are twenty languages of multilingual learners currently in the Granite Falls School District. That number will continue to increase. And so it is really a great idea for us to consider at roughly eighty-four hundred dollars a year, resources for eighty-five and growing K twelve students who speak another language. You can see the list of things there. Um, one of the things that I would like to say is the, the ticket price seems really high. It is quite reasonable, um, for what we are purchasing, which is five years of materials for students across our whole system. The piece that we also would like to talk about is that into lit, the left-hand side of your column could be paid for out of basic. Read One Eighty, which is specifically for special education, could be purchased using special education funds. And that change of cap or the, the, the sunsetting of the cap helps us in that way. And E three D for our multilingual learners could be paid for at least partially out of Title III funds. So we are working to find ways to be innovative about how we spend the dollars. Um, but just so that you know, um, it's meant to come out of possibly a couple of other, a couple of other places too. At the back of your packet, you'll find some staff testimonials. And I'd like to read two of them from Kimball, second page, and you're welcome to read these at your leisure. Mick says, I would use performance to describe student engagement. I piloted the H M H curriculum in ninth grade only, and we did epic journeys unit. The summative task for the unit had students produce an expository essay about what drives students to take on challenges. Students had already completed formal writing assignments earlier in the year, so this writing task was building on their prior knowledge and prior writing experience. But the essays that students turned in reflected solid growth in their writing skills. I think the topic was accessible to their worldview at fourteen and fifteen years old, the variety of sources students were able to pull from allowed for thoughtful connections between secondary sources and the primary source experiences they were connecting to in their own life. We are now reading through Romeo and Juliet, the fourth unit. And a literary analysis writing piece asks them to speak to universal themes by applying nearly five-hundred-year-old customs to what dating in the twenty-first century looks like. I've already begun front-loading students with material that will help them produce that writing when we get to it in the coming weeks for fourth quarter summer break, being weeks away. And many students being newly introduced to Elizabethan literature, the interest level is, is high. I attribute this in part to careful consideration on H M H's part, H M H's part to embed personally relevant writing as unit assessments. And from our friend Katie, who, as a reminder, she teaches special education here at Granite Falls High School. Read One Eighty phonics is not explicitly taught beyond fifth grade, true story. And every year, Katie has three to five students who are significantly delayed in their phonemic awareness, which affects their ability not only to read, but to write clearly with no curriculum to support them. Read One Eighty has provided me with tools and instructional sequences, tips and tricks to help reduce the achievement gap for those students. One student this year was reading at a first, second grade level with writing at a pre-primar kindergarten level, and this student just scored a level two on the S back for ELA. I appreciate the ability to have independent activities geared toward individual students while being able to focus on reading comprehension and writing strategies for the large group. Katie also did some work with H M H. H M H was intended for Gen Ed curriculum, but I've also been able to use it with differentiated levels of access and support built in to provide a more comprehensive learning experience for students on an I E P. The current and more relevant topics and passages engage more of my students on a consistent basis, which reduced some of the more disengaging types of behaviors. And there is more. So what we are asking, um, is your careful consideration to adopt, um, H M H Into Literature and its partner programs. Um, and I have brought some of our team here, if you have any questions for them, or have any questions for me.
I have a question. Um, so third through fifth grade, they're on Amplify.
Correct.
How is the segue from Amplify to this? And was there any thought on keeping Amplify in sixth through?
I'll have to defer to the team on that, John.
Yes.
Yeah.
So like we originally started looking at ELA or a couple times, we were like, what's look at? Just, um, secondary level, if you have the either to my perspective, sort of, yeah, but we put it on all the looking at. And, uh, look, interest, central problems. How, deputy, love the other ones that we looked at.
Do you think they could go from fifth grade then to sixth grade and kind of flow into that? Okay, goes from Amplify to this, like with terminology and all that?
From everything I know of Amplify, um, we'll actually have students coming into secondary with being more skilled readers. Um, so they will be, should be closer to grade level, if not at grade level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that'll take a little bit of time for them to age up, but, um, yeah, from everything, I know that transition should be fine because Amplify builds, uh, people into readers. And once they're readers, then we can grapple more with the ideas and the themes that the units and H M H, um, present.
Well, thank you.
Just money-wise, did we allocate for this adoption?
Yeah, I, I would, I, I think Carl's been on the board a long time, well, I'm just, I don't remember right now, but, um, we went on to, by the last time, we promised that we would do our part to adopt curriculums. And so you, I think we all know, we haven't had any new curriculum in anything probably in twenty-plus years. And in the last three years, we adopted math. I think we adopted the science curriculum, adopted reading curriculum at elementary school. And now we're going to do, um, six through twelve. And I think that that's something we promised our community when we ran our last levy. And so I, I personally, I mean, I'm not, I'm not that knowledgeable curriculum. I'm proud that we're doing something we haven't done in twenty years. That's having a real curriculum adoption cycle in our district.
Did we allocate though for?
Yes.
We did, okay. What bucket is that coming out of?
A little bit of a special ed, which isn't so hard because we've got a little bit of, um, capital's lifted, capacity. Rest is out of basic ed, which is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's coming out of our.
And then these, this proposal here, so we, we pay it on an annual basis, it's not an upfront.
It all.
And.
And then it's just a, a, a really big price for it. I mean, it's almost like, I think for five years, you almost get this group.
Yeah, and I can answer a little bit of that, Director Ladue. Um, the one-year price is, I think, a hundred, like, if you were to go, to go like à la carte, one year at a time, it's about a hundred and thirteen dollars a student for the same package. So by doing the five-year plan, it's sixty-one dollars per student.
And then help me understand, so like I said, haven't done this in thirty-one years, I think you would mention. We're looking at a five-year proposal, so then is the expectation that in five years from now, we're readdressing it again, is like, or is, yeah, because I, I love that we're actually, that this is something that will actually move our students forward. Um, yeah, just understanding, like, as we're looking at it, is this, is it five-year costs, you know, paid for, and then in four and a half years, or I guess four years, we should be reevaluating it again, and then potentially, like, is, is this, is this typical within districts to do an allocation like this every five years for a six, twelve?
Yeah, though I, what I would say is, we would not expect to, to rerun another pilot four years from now
Mm-hmm.
for another ticket price of this size. We would likely, if the materials continue to be, we, we, I hold a belief that we do reevaluate our practices and our things every few years, right? Because we are needing to stay ahead of, of a digital world.
Yeah.
But that said, um, there would be opportunities. Well, the only things that we would need to purchase if we were to go after five years would be the consumables. And that comes with another negotiation, but just for consumables.
Okay.
So we would, we would, we already own most of the teacher textbooks, and it would be the access to the digital site.
Yeah.
And I would challenge, um, that sometimes when we do these things and we adopt these things, that we then use them, and as we use them, they become like our clothing, and they're part of Canvas now, and those things like that, so.
Is it, um, as tonight, are you asking for a vote on this or consideration? Because what, and I don't know if the rest of the board thinks the same way, like, it sounds like there's, out of the three ninety-three or whatever it is, there's opportunity, there, there's, there's opportunity to clarify more of like what specific bu- buckets of that's fun coming from, from funding. Um, I don't know if there are any grants or anything too that can go behind this, like, are we expecting that, like, very clear, like, it's three ninety-three right now, however, this is how much is going to come out of this bucket, this much is going to come out of here.
That's specific. So basic ed is the first bucket.
Okay.
Um, special education is the second bucket, and then Title III, uh, we could even use T B I P money for, um, the third, the, the forty-one thousand. I will speak to this from a teacher point of view, and I've been a special education teacher, and I've worked with lots of multilingual students, and to have materials in front of you specifically meeting the needs of unique learners is really exciting. Um, it is so difficult to do the work when you don't have the right materials in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and for me, I'm not questioning, I, I trust the, um, the, the adoption group, and I, obviously there's a dire need, I'm just making sure that we can afford it, because this comes out of the general fund, which always makes me a little bit more hesitant. Not saying that I, I don't support it. Uh, Marshall, will we still hit our five percent fund balance goal for this school year?
Yes.
And then.
Great answer.
Good enough for me, Dan.
I, I want to just pipe in a little bit. One is, I want to say how much I appreciate you and the group of, of teachers that came together to do this. I got to sit in on one of the sessions. And the interactions that were going on, uh, guided by Emily Moore was amazing. Um, because we did have our employee participation in evaluating this system. The other thing is, I, I, I have to tell you that after coming on the board and, and finding out that we actually have had teachers have to make up their curriculum for, for decades because there wasn't a strategic plan to educate from K through twelve. Um, we were doing a disservice to the, to the, to the kid. I know that all of the board members share in, um, our concern when we look at our test scores uh, over the last couple of years and see not just stagnation, but, but a reversal in, in our, in our progress. And I think as, as a, 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 a father of, of four kids, watching them progress through school, it's hard for me to grasp that we didn't have a strategic curriculum to follow. And I think that what we did do was we did a disservice to the teachers by not providing them the tools. We hired them to come and do a job. It said, okay, but bring your own tools to the job and do, do the best you can. But as we get elected into the board, we're up here with expectations that all of our students are moving forward. And without a structured curriculum, I think that we've been failing. I, I really do support what you as the group did here. And, and, and I, and I, and I completely understand. I, I'm, I'm hearing Marshall, that was one of my concerns was, hey, how are we going to pay for this? Sounds like we can pay for it. Sounds like it's not going to impact our, our staffing. It, it's not something that's going to impact, but it is actually, you know, we're here for the students. We talk about every student deserving the right to an education without curriculum. I think that, again, thirty-one years is what I read in this packet. It, it sounds like there were teachers that were struggling with this. I could see as a, as a as if, if in, in the fire service, I wasn't given direction on how to do my job or wasn't given the right tools to do my job, I would get frustrated with it more and more. And so I, I appreciate, again, one more time, the group that came together to analyze this. I, I, John, I appreciate your hand or as far as how transitioning from fifth to sixth grade and that without structure in K through five. We need the structures in sixth through twelve. If, if, and at sixty-one dollars a student, I'm surprised.
Yeah, and I, I say too, I've mentioned this in the past where we're up here, but I lean so heavily, the testimonials are what I focus on because you're the ones that are using it. Like, all that I care about is, do you feel like you are getting the tools to help you help the kids, right? I mean, that's, that's really it. And so the testimonials really do help. And so, yeah, I mean, this is, this is the more exciting stuff that we get to talk about is actually improving children's outcomes within schools. So.
I appreciated Emily talking about the technology aspect of it. I have a curriculum that I have to teach in science that the technology part is a pain. So can you, you guys can faithfully say that you can get past any technology issues and, and still teach the stuff? Yeah?
Teaching it, so.
Well, I'm just saying, because like for me and my, my teaching team, like the technology part of that curriculum is just the worst. It'd be just, ah, the whole time. So, I mean, as long as that's not a factor.
Can I ask a dumb question? You say the technology base, like getting everyone online and stuff like, I just want to miss Brown's hand.
Well, so for example, my, 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 it's science and even creating like a lesson plan, you have to grab from all these online sources and put it together. And then the student workbook is like workbook, but online, but this and that. And we're first grade and first graders like trying to get like, you would think in this day and age, they could be on a tablet like, and no, thank you. And it's a mess. And so, you know, it's having to kind of go around the curriculum and, and stuff. So it can get hard sometimes. So I'm lit, I'm, I'm, my experience is in little, so not, you know, the older, but it, it can be a pain trying to balance all of that.
So it's really teachers navigate.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's mostly teachers navigating.
There's a little, there is a little bit of both.
Yeah.
But also, you know, some robust PD that gets all the teachers in the room. Because they've, they've just had kind of the dip into how to use it as part of the pilot. So I'm confident that we can get to a space. Again, it wasn't a deal breaker for them. This is my twenty-fifth year. I've never met and they'll nod with me. I've never met a curriculum that solved all the problems. But this is a pretty darn good one. And the impact that we're seeing from students already, I think cannot be overstated.
Okay, so then we're seeking action on this tonight? Okay. So there are motion for?
I'll make a motion that we approve the curriculum package as presented.
Okay, one second. Motion's been made in seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, teams.
And I just want John to say his three words and a thank you af- at the end of it. John, go.
Got your two card.
I got it. Ready?
Yeah. No, we, we do need this. That's, you know, but developing curriculum is an engaging thing, but it's not the way that you create an educational system. And we need to operate as a system that's cohesive. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the board is going to adjourn to a closed session. The time right now is eight o'clock. I believe we need, what, twenty-five minutes? Fifteen? Okay, so we're going to adjourn, five minutes there, five minutes back. So twenty-five minutes total. So we'll return here at eight twenty-five.
Hey, we are rejoining our regular school board session after the closed session.
Are we back online? Okay.
Okay. So we'll take action from the closed session.
I move to approve the non-renewal provisional teacher, Michelle Taylor and Andrew Thor.
One second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Hi.
And now we will move to the consent agenda. Nine. Any additions on there that aren't? No? Okay. Any discussion on consent agenda?
No.
Okay, consent agenda passes by unanimous consent. And now we will be returning to a separate closed session. Yeah, and this is regarding contract negotiations. Dana, thirty minutes?
Sure.
Thirty minutes? Okay, so we'll begin with thirty minutes, five minutes in between. So we will return here at nine. All right, we are re-entering each session after our closed session. Actions from the closed session, I'll pass over to Carl Carey.
Yeah, I move that we extend the superintendent contract for a year and direct the board chair to execute a agreement with the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, and that closes this regular meeting of the Granite Falls School Board at nine.